Strike for 2022 to order. I'm Jamie Johnson, the Board President. I'll introduce the rest of the Board. Bob Baumann, our Vice President. Bob, raise your hand so that the folks watching on TV know who you are. All right. And our Clerk, Carrie Whitaker, and our Treasurer, Heather Logland, members Rob Brown, Kate Garza, and Molly Powers, and our Superintendent is Dr. Nick Aulet, and Chief Financial and Operations Officer is Bonnie Stegman. So you will be hearing more from Nick and Bonnie and Heather later, but I'll turn it over to our Superintendent. He's going to lay out the annual meeting parameters and the election of the Chairperson.
So the annual meeting, one of the first order of business that we have to take care of is we have to elect a Chairperson for the annual meeting. At this time, I will call for nominations for a Chairperson for the annual meeting. Are there any nominations for Chair?
I nominate Jamie Johnson.
All right. We have a nomination for Jamie Johnson. I will call for a second time, any nominations for Chair? All right. I will call for a third and final time, any nominations for a Chair? All right. Hearing only one, I'll go ahead and close nominations by voice vote of everyone in attendance. All those in favor of Jamie Johnson becoming our Chair of the annual meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right. I'll turn the meeting back over to Jamie Johnson.
All right. Thank you. And I'll turn it back over to Nick for the Hudson School District highlights, which I failed to do last year, and again, humbly apologize for the third time. But I think it is a great way to start this annual meeting because you've got lots to say, so I'll turn over to Dr. Nick.
All right. And I'm not quite sure what slide Tim will be on behind me, so I'm just going to say I'm on Slide 2 at this point. A couple of things I want to touch on related to our strategic mission, our strategic plan, our mission, our vision, and values. Just to recap, our mission is we're dedicated to developing, caring, and contributing community members. We are collectively committed to providing a rigorous, student-centered environment to ensure equitable experiences for all. In our strategic plan that is off to the left of the mission statement, highlights how we're going to do that over the next five years. Building our mission statement is really our vision. Where do we see us going in the Hudson School District? And what do we want to see done? And it's, we want to empower all students to cultivate their talents, embrace their passions, and leverage their learning to impact the world around them. As we move through, we do have a set of values or value statements that align with our mission and vision and our strategic plan. And those values are student-centered, community, empathy, collaboration, integrity, contribution, and purpose. And on those slides, you can read what we mean by each of those different components, but it really is about, you know, creating a well-rounded individual by the time they leave us after 13 years, or five years, or six years, however long they've been in the school district. And so those values really start to emulate what that looks like. As we work through this, the next slide, 6, what I'm going to do is talk a little bit about our kids and what we've had going on this summer, and then some of our successes, talk about our staff, and then talk about our community. I think it's interesting for people to know that just because school is out for the summer doesn't mean that we weren't educating or working with kids this summer. We had over 800 kids in our K-5 summer school enrichment classes, and we had an additional 182 incoming kindergartners that participated in our introduction class to kind of prep them for what to look forward to in kindergarten. We did have another 400 students that were part of our middle school, summer school programming, and we had 67 students that are part of our special education program that received additional support throughout, through an extended school year where trying to meet their needs and meet everything that they need in order to be successful sometimes takes an additional extended amount of time in the year. We also had almost 1,200 students participating in our swim program. It's a great program. It's been going on for, I don't know, Dave, do you know how many years we've been doing summer swim?
Summer swim has been doing for several years, been part of summer school for the last four.
Okay. We had additionally, we had over 260 students involved in our school age care backpackers program, receiving childcare throughout the summer. Another 460 student athletes were part of our Raider Elite Program, and that's the strength and conditioning program that we have at the middle school and the high school. We had 85 students participating in our marching band program, and 61 4th through 8th grade students participating in orchestra camp. Our middle school band camp did have 172 students participating in it. So we had a lot of, a lot of different things going on, a lot of students in our buildings. Just because school is out for summer doesn't mean kids were done learning or participating. Couple of our achievements related to our students, a couple of things I want to highlight. The district exceeds expectations on the state report card with a score of 80.3. It's one of the highest we've had. Our state ACT composite score is a 21.6 compared to the state average of 19.3, and we had over 205 AP Scholars and additional over 60 students related to college credit and Project Lead the Way. So that's our engineering program that we have in the district. We did have over 100 students inducted into our National Honor Society with over 7,200 hours of community service that they provided in a variety of ways. We had 121 scholarship recipients with local scholarships totaling over 155,000. And our marching band performed at the state marching band competition this summer, or this past year, I'm sorry. Additionally, our student activities, state and beyond, our high school forensics, DECA, we had five students advanced to nationals, our healthcare occupation student association had students participating in state. Our middle school and high school science olympiad had members competing in the state level. Our 7th grade eCyber Mission won the state competition. And our middle school problem solver, future problem solvers, were also competing at the state level along with EP Rock. And the middle school had destination imagination teams that were competing in international, global. So we had a lot of representation there. And then again, the last one I want to mention is EP Rock did have members of students that were participating at the state level for the Battle of the Books. When we look at our athletics with our kids, we had over 64% of our high school students participating in at least one, one or more extracurricular sport or activity. We were conference champs in boys soccer, cross, boys cross-country, girls and boys hockey, boys and girls swimming, or boys swimming, girls track and field, and our raid airs won conference as well. That is our nationally recognized dance program that we have. We did have state champions as our raid airs were state champions, and our boys hockey, I believe, were defending, repeat, state champions. We had state qualifying teams, both girls and boys cross-country, sent runners to the state meet. Our boys soccer took runner-up in the state tournament, and our girls tennis and girls and boys wrestling also sent competitors to the state tournament. As we look at our staff, we're just under 800 full-time certified and support employees. This year, we welcomed over 69 new certified staff members and over 55 new support staff members, and we have vacancies that we're filling as we go still. We had five, we welcomed five new administrators to the district this summer as well. You know, and we also think about all the different things that the district does. We don't just educate children, we also feed them, we transport them, we provide childcare and facilities and grounds and maintenance. We served over 1,200 breakfasts every day last year, over 2,300 hot lunches every day last year. We had 3,500 students transported to and from school every day, and we averaged about 549 children in our before and after-school care programs through school age care. Our facilities and grounds, as you know, have been responding to the storm from May 19th, and it seems like a long time ago, but we incurred over $20 million worth of damage to the school district. And when you think about the amount of construction and work to coordinate all those things and trying to get it done in the summer, it is a huge coordination effort, and they did, they have been working, and they're still working and done a great job. Our staff over the past, over the past year have had, you know, many accomplishments. Rivercrest was recognized as a national blue ribbon school. There were only five school districts, or five schools in the state of Wisconsin that were recognized as a national blue ribbon school. Were able to go to the ceremony and be recognized by the United States Department of Education for that, and that was a great honor. The elementary school counselors received an Equity in Action Award from the Wisconsin School Counseling Association. Chris DeLeon was named the U.S. Army's eCyber Mission Team Advisor of the Year, and that was also, he was in charge of the team that won the state at the 7th grade level. And Steve Solom was named the Boys State Soccer Coach for the Year as well. When we look at, we look at our community and the ability to brag on different things that we have going on there, we are in our 12th consecutive year as Best Communities for Music Education, and that's great support both through this district and other entities in the community that have allowed us to earn those awards. We have over 20 community business partnerships that provide skill training and placements for our children that are moving beyond, they're in our transitioning program from high school into the next stage in their life that happen to have special needs. And we've had some great business partners really, really working with us and helping us with that and working with our kids. And then EP Rock completed its 24th year of its Stand By Me Mentor Program with 27 community mentors that were part of that, part of that program as they work with kids to continue to provide positive role models in their life. In addition, you know, Willow River partnered with the PIPS this last year on a bird migration celebration, and that's a neat project that if you ever have an opportunity to get down into the lobby area of the PIPS, you'll be able to kind of see that, that project and what that looks like. And then Hudson Prairies 4th and 5th grade students worked with a semi-local artist on the large-scale monarch butterflies, and they're on display in the foyer area in the media center as you, as you come into the building. So we've had lots of wonderful accomplishments in the district over this past year. It doesn't mean that we rest on those accomplishments. Every year, we try to continue to build on those things, but we're very fortunate. We're fortunate to have such strong community support. We're fortunate to have such great kids to work with, and we're fortunate to have such a caring and involved parent community that really cares about their kids being successful. And so it really does make Hudson, you know, a premier destination of where people want to live and thrive. And so, like I said, we are, we are very fortunate, myself, having three children in the district, feel very fortunate to have them here. So without anything else, I guess I will turn it over to the next item on the agenda, which I believe is the district financial review from our Treasurer.
Great. Thanks, Nick.
Yep.
Hi, I'm Heather Logland, and I am honored to serve again this year as your School Board Treasurer. So in just a moment, Bonnie Stegman, our Chief Finance and Operations Number, is going to be the one who will really take you through the numbers as she presents the proposed 2022-2023 budget. But prior to doing that, I did want to share just a few thoughts. First, for those of you who are here or are accessing the annual report, school financing in the state of Wisconsin is really complicated, with dollars coming from numerous local, federal, and state sources based on formulas that at times seem to defy all logic. That said, for the Hudson School District, the outcome of this complicated approach is that the biggest chunk of our funding, about 57% of the proposed budget for this school year comes from local property taxes. So from all of you who live within the boundaries of our district. And I understand that you want to know that your dollars are being used well. Our district is very thoughtful about how it puts financial resources, including your tax dollars, to work, supporting our students and staff and aligned with our mission and vision. And mission and vision are important, and Nick just shared them, and I want to call our attention to them again because they're at the top, right? That's what everything we do should be aligned with. So as a reminder, through our mission statement, we collectively commit to providing a rigorous, student-centered environment to ensure equitable experiences for all students. And our vision is to empower all students to cultivate their talents, embrace their passions, and leverage their learning to impact the world around them. Reflecting on these, I can't help but think of a keynote speaker at last year's state school board convention who suggested that our teachers are really no longer the purveyors of knowledge. And at that point, he held up one of these and said, here's your purveyor of knowledge. He suggested that instead, our teachers are now purveyors of learning experiences. I am not a trained educator. That sounds a lot harder to me, to be a purveyor of learning experiences. It really is these learning experiences facilitated by our teachers that are going to inspire curiosity, nurture talent, provoke critical thinking, and foster communication in ways that are going to prepare our students for success in this 21st century. To be able to provide these types of dynamic, student-centered learning experiences for our students, we first need to invest in attracting, retaining, and supporting the very best teachers. And then we need to be sure they have the materials and learning spaces to facilitate those kinds of engaged learning experiences with our students. That is no small challenge. In just a moment, Bonnie will go through the proposed budget, highlighting some of the most important considerations that we've discussed as a Board. I want you to know that while we as a Board have spent a lot of time discussing this year's budget, we're also having conversations that look far beyond this year. We're having conversations that consider the financial impact of continued flat or declining enrollment, especially when coupled with continued increased property value. We're having conversations about class sizes and ways that we might help ensure that they are equitable for children across our district. We're having conversations about our buildings and the considerable investments that will be needed if we want to not only keep them up to code and safe for our students and staff, but also to ensure that teachers have the kind of space they need to deliver high quality, equitable learning experiences for all of our kids. And we're having conversations about how we can best support the emotional, social needs of our students and staff, including those in need of support and services during times of crisis. As we face these challenges, we are going to need to continue to make difficult decisions. I hope that you, like me, a school board member, a taxpayer, a community member, a parent of still one child in this district, continue to feel proud, not only of all of the excellent outcomes we are achieving, and Nick just spent a long time highlighting a sample from the past year alone of those academic, athletic, and other extracurricular achievements, but also of the way that we continue to strive for improvement, of the way that we pivot and adapt in times of change, of the ways that we are managing the financial resources with which we are entrusted, including your tax dollars, especially in these challenging times, financial times. So I will turn it over to whoever's next, and eventually Bonnie, who has the fun of actually talking about the numbers. But on behalf of our Hudson School Board, I thank you for your continued support of the students and staff of this Hudson School District, and I am pleased to support the recommended budget for 2022-2023. Thanks.
Thank you, Heather. Thank you, Heather. And next up is Bonnie Stegman, our Chief Financial and Operations Officer, to present the 22-23 budget.
Thank you. Heather, thank you so much. You're so eloquent, and it, as a new member of the administration, it tells me the thought and the hard work that went into preparing the budget. So although I'm summarizing it, a lot of the hard work happened before I came here, but thank you so much. That was very nice. As we look at the budget, there were some main factors facing the district this year. The first one is a revenue limit. This is the second year of the biennial budget, and that has had a $0 increase per pupil, very challenging for districts. Declining enrollment, the district continues to see a rolling three-year average of declining enrollment that directly affects the revenue limit calculation. In light of our society, student services and student learning continue to evaluate programming to ensure that all students instructional needs are met. A big one that I think we've talked about several times is the retention and recruitment staff continues to be challenging for the district. Human resources and the Communication Department have done an outstanding job of recruiting staff through the customization of marketing for specific positions, implementation of retention bonuses, and the approval of competitive staff compensation packages for all of our employment, all of our employment categories. The district has continued its commitment to maintain class sizes within established ranges, and the evaluation of district facilities and the development of long-term maintenance plan for all of our locations. And I apologize for the slides, but they are in the packet, so if you, if you're having a hard time seeing them. The main driver of the revenue limit calculations and state equalization aid is student enrollment. Trends for our district are forecasting a decline in student membership. The enrollment decline has been offset since 2017-18 school year with the commencement of 4K programming in the district. So if you look at the chart, the 4K enrollment is highlighted by the light blue section of the graph. We did have an increased membership count for the 22-23 school year aid calculation due to increased summer school program in the August 2021 school year. Often we're asked, and Heather touched on it a little bit, where do we get our fund, our general fund revenues? The main funding source of the district revenue continues to be the local tax levy, which is projected to be approximately 57%. The next largest source of revenue is the state equalization aid, followed by federal sources. Majority of federal sources is accounted by Esser Funding. As we turn to our general fund expenses, the main portion of our Fund 10 operating budget is designated to salary and fringe at 68%. The remaining large expense categories are purchased services, which typically include mainly transportation, independent contractors, and the main inter-fund transfer to support special education services in the district. Some exciting news for the district is that the district continues to see a large increase in new construction property value. New construction directly increased the tax base to support the local school tax levy. This year, the district is projecting over $131 million of new construction within our district boundaries. And if you look at the graph, it's a breakdown of each municipality. In addition to the new construction, the district is projecting a 16.6%, or approximately $880 million increase in equalized property value. The projected state average increase is estimated at 14%. But again, there's a summary of the different townships and how they'll be, how they are projected to grow this year. The district is scheduled to make debt payment, to make payments in the amount of $7.2 million on our debt schedule, bringing the total debt to approximately $89 million. In addition to the regular scheduled payment, the district is planning to levy an additional $5.3 million to prepay principal and still reduce the mill rate from 9.93 to 9.03, or We're often asked, how do we compare within CISA? Obviously, we don't have all the mill rates from all of our surrounding districts, but we do have the 2021-22 mill rate comparison. And if you see, we're towards the left of that a little bit. So after we review that information, we do have a proposed resolution to set the levy for the 2022-22-3 school year. The total levy would be $55,788, or $788,205.
All right. Thank you, Bonnie. All right. I guess now at this time, we would open the hearing on the proposed budget. This is time for any resident of the school district to ask questions regarding the proposed And I'm opening that up. We have actually one microphone at the front here for anyone wanting to come forward. And it doesn't stop any Board member from asking questions, although we've been talking about this budget for six months. So I think everyone here has asked at least one question and probably more over the course of those six months. And Bonnie's had the benefit of the last two work sessions, having been on board. I guess you did attend also in June, I think, before you started. So anyway, it hasn't changed a whole lot, but we do get more information. And again, this is a proposed budget because the final budget and final levy are not set until October. All right. I've called twice for any comments. I'll call a third time for any comments or questions regarding the 22-23 proposed budget. And not hearing any, I'll entertain a motion to adopt pursuant to the language on page 22. Any member of the district is, you know, allowed to make the resolution, but I would entertain one at this time.
Mr. President?
Yes, Heather.
I guess we say, be it resolved, instead of I move. Be it resolved that a tax in the total amount of $55,788,205, that's $42,971,745 general fund, $12,591,460 debt service, and $225,000 community services fund, be and is hereby levied against the taxable property in the Hudson School District for school purposes.
Good job getting through that motion without any mistakes. That's good. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rob Brown. Again, I will call for any further comments, questions. Hearing none. All those in favor of the proposed budget and levy indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and the proposed levy is passed. At this time, the district can have new business. There are, first order of the new business is to set the date for the 2023 annual meeting. And given that we've always had that, the second, or the, at the same night as the action meeting in September, I think in the past, we've had them on Tuesdays and somewhere along the line, we switched to Monday nights. But in this case, we don't, won't be doing it on Labor Day, but this will be the week after Labor Day, just like tonight is, Monday, September 11, 2023, at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adopt that time and date for the 2023 annual meeting? So moved?
Second.
All right. Motion by Rob, second by Bob. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Could I ask a question before we vote on that?
Okay, sure.
Could we entertain the possibility that that meeting starts at 6:30?
Well? Let's start whenever you want. Yeah, we can start anytime we want. Just, I think we've, in the past, I just, I think it's always been at seven, because I, one of those things, like tradition, it's always been at 7:00. And then we've adjusted the regular meeting based on how long we think the agenda. And I think this year, actually, the agenda was a little shorter on our action meeting than we've had in the past. I remember years where we had to suspend business and then reconvene after the annual meeting, but is there any further discussion on the idea of, I guess, Rob, it was your motion, Bob second, right? Whether you want to make it 6:30?
I mean, I'd love to hear from the rest of the Board, you know, but if the majority of the Board thinks that's a good idea, I'm happy to accept a friendly amendment.
Yeah. I think with any time, I mean, there's never going to be a perfect time because you're, you're trying to optimize, I think, attendance at these things and make it so folks who are working over in the cities, they can get home, eat a decent supper, and get to the annual meeting. But as was the case tonight, we actually had more attendees at our action meeting than we did here at the annual meeting, but...
Yeah, it doesn't really seem like capacity was a huge issue tonight, so...
Right, yeah. All right. Other members? Rob wants to... Right, yeah. All right. Other members? Rob wants to weigh in before accepting the friendly amendment, so I, yeah.
I would be happy to have it at 6:30, and if we do need to suspend and then come back, we certainly can.
Okay. Very good.
I would agree with Kate and Chris.
Okay, we seem to have a majority, at least board members that are willing to adjust the schedule. And so, Rob, do you...
Mr. President?
Yes.
I accept a friendly amendment.
All right. And the second, Rob?
Second.
All right. So the dates and time for the annual meeting is Monday, September 11, at 6:30 proposed. And I guess I've never seen that much discussion about the, setting the date and time in 10 years of doing this, but there's always a first. So all those in favor of the new date and time, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Now I'll move to, I guess, item B or section B under new business, which is other annual meeting powers. There's a variety of things that can be done under the statute, which has been exercised in the last seven years, I know. But is there anyone else that has new business to come before the board? All right. I don't hear any. I'll call one more time. Any other business to come before the electors of the Hudson School District for the 2022 annual meeting? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Member Rob Brown. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We have a second by Kate Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. We are adjourned.